This is February 25th, Jackson County Commission Work Session to Order. Roll call, Ms. Erickson.
District one, Tim Gaffey. District two, Jason Venable. District three, Dennis Miller. District four, Stacy Lutman.
Present.
There's a floor presser.
Have our invocation by Mr. Porter and pledge by Mr. Gaffey. First item is approval of the agenda. We have fourteen items on our agenda. Do you have any changes before we proceed? Do you have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I have a motion.
Motion, do we have a second?
Sure.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. First, next item is public comments from citizens. And we have Mr. Jim Moore, who decided to speak this evening.
Good evening, everybody. And I'm here probably to make all of you mad at me. Come on, it's your money. We need $4,000 to do our ambulance building at North San Mountain. Because we've got a lot, still got a lot of stuff to pay for and we don't have the money to pay for it. And we need ambulance up there because I talked to the man that runs one from Flat Rock. And he made seven calls to Bryant from Piers. Three to North San Mountain and two to Flat Rock. So you can tell that we need it that close because right now, it takes ambulance about forty-five minutes from Piers to our Stevenson to get to us. And if we get this building built and get the ambulance there, Island Medical Center's going to put one in it and they're going to pay people to run it twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And it'd take them about ten to fifteen minutes to get to Bryant if we get this up here at North San Mountain. So we appreciate it if y'all can help us with that. And I think four more thousand dollars will do what we have we got to do.
Is there a contract you're looking at as far as for completion of it?
Really? We haven't got one yet. We're just, we're working on it, trying to get it. And they've been up there working on it. We've got the building framed up now. They put the roof and the siding and all on it. Then we gotta get in there and build two bathrooms, two bedrooms, and a kitchen. And we're going to do all that inside and furnish a heat and air unit. We've still got our septic tank and field line to put in and our power, our water, and phone system. So, we're working on all of that. And we just hope that y'all can work with us. If you can, we really appreciate it. And I know the people up there will.
And the hospital has agreed to furnish?
The hospitals done agreed to put the ambulance in there and furnish people to run it twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And they pay for all that. And they paid the deposit down on the water meter. The hospital's already paid it, so we haven't paid the rest of it, but that's, that's, that much.
And how much money is there being private donations?
Uh, bill, I don't know just exactly. On private donations?
Over about fifty-one hundred.
On private donations? And that's churches and their individuals and businesses donating to it.
From the delegation, Mr. Moore?
Sorry?
From the delegation?
Uh, from, not just people, like churches and private people giving donations.
The delegations give ten thousand dollars and just agree to pay four more thousand?
Yeah, right.
And has the hospital put any money in this?
No, see, they're going to do the, like I say, they're going to put the ambulance there and furnish people to run it. It won't cost us nothing, in fact it did. And the bank, which other than bank donated the property to put the building on.
The hospital, except by utilities and everything.
Right.
You won't let me out.
We won't have to do nothing else, like we get the building built. And I think we'll help, help the community a hundred percent again.
Thank you, sir.
We appreciate you. Here.
Next item is, or first item on the discussion items, expenditures for the month of January. You have in your packets the list of expenditures for the month of January. Everybody can review those and be ready in about fifteen minutes. We'll put that on the next meeting agenda in March if that is suitable for everybody. So you have plenty of time to review those. Questions or comments on that? Next item is the inmate phone contract. We have Mr. Don Marzella with, I'm sorry, with the name of the company again?
Securus.
Securus. When is it?
Thank you very much for allowing us to speak. This is my manager, Lisa Weaver. Lisa's flown in from Dallas, which is where Securus is headquartered. I'm from Shelby County, Alabama, Alina, so thank you for seeing us. We'll be brief. I was appointed to your account manager, your sales rep back in June when I was hired, and I've taken over the northern half of the state since I live in Birmingham. That made a lot of sense. But I have since found out through discussions with the sheriff and chief deputy and your jail administrator, chief generals, Securus has been your inmate telephone provider since the jail was built. We used to go by the name Evercom, and then we changed to Securus. Sheriff, I believe you were in office the last time that we, we did the contract. So we've been in, your inmate telephone provider for, you know, at least fifteen years. Our current contract ends in June. We're very desirous of continuing as your inmate telephone provider. In my discussions with the sheriff's staff and the sheriff himself, there does not appear to be any issues that you've had with, with Securus. The small things that occasionally need to be fixed, we fix very quickly. We have a technician that lives not far from here that works his territory, so I have prepared packets of information, and I'll leave these with you in just a minute when I conclude. But this current contract has in it a provision for three one-year renewals. We would love to, to see, to see this first one-year renewal take, take place. In my discussions with Sheriff Phillips, he has two needs that he wants to see in his jail, two very, very specific needs. He wants a video visitation to be installed in the jail. And I think when it comes to video visitation, there's no inmate telephone provider that has what we have. I actually brought my unit and I have it here, I could quickly show you. But it is the most advanced, the most indestructible, the most inmate-friendly unit that you will find. We actually bought the company that makes these units so that we would have control of the production. So when we need units, they are available. What you can do with the video visitation unit is exactly what the sheriff has indicated he'd like to see happen. The inmates can order commissary items by touching an icon on the screen, and it opens up the list of commissary items. You, if you have a medical issue, you touch the red cross and, and you can tell the medical staff what your medical issue is. If there's an emergency, you would hit emergency and then the staff would come immediately. There is a question and answer icon. If, you know, the sheriff's staff, all day long, they're answering questions about when's my bond date, when is visitation hours, you know, what's my bottom out, what's my next court date? All of these questions can be put onto the video visitation unit so that the sheriff's staff can, can do more important duties of securing the inmates and managing the jail. There's a bunch more, a bunch more icons that can be put on this unit. It's, it's really an incredible unit. There's nothing like it on the market today. The other need that the sheriff had was for a jail, for a law library. Right this second, I don't have the law library installed on my video visitation unit, but it is, it is on the agenda for this year. I cannot say when this year, but let's say the commission instructed Securus to proceed with installing video visitation. I dare say that by the time we, we have to do a site survey, we have to do a lot of mapping of where things will go in the jail, by the time we install, the law library would probably be available. But it will be available this year. So the two needs that the sheriff had, video visitation, you won't find a better video visitation system than Securus. And, and the law library, all of, all of, both of those items could be taken care of this year. When I looked over your current contract, there are some revenue-producing items that, for whatever reason, maybe they were not available at the time, but there are revenue-producing items that are not in your jail at the moment. I'm sure that the commission would love to have more revenue-producing items. It does not cost the county commission any money to put these items in. So it, to me, it sort of seems like a fairly easy answer. You know, well, Don, if we, if we continue with Securus, if we go with this one-year renewal, we want you to maximize in the jail the revenue-producing items, and we can do that.
I have a question.
Yes.
You said the inmates can do all this themselves and, and no inmates, what is, what are the provisions to keep them from tearing this up or disabling it or something?
You know, Lisa, I should have pulled it out. It's, you can take this handset, you know, the phone handset, and you can beat on the screen as hard as you can beat and nothing happens. It's, when I say it's virtually indestructible, it virtually is. It fits flush against the wall. Drinks or liquids cannot spill and get into any of the workings. We have found that inmates, keep in mind, they use this video visitation unit to communicate with friends and family back home. Okay? I feel sorry for an inmate that tears up one of these units. Because the next inmate that had a video visitation session scheduled after him or her is not going to be very happy. So they, they sort of protect themselves. These units, whereas a phone is a phone, and usually a pod would have a couple of phones, this is one video visitation unit. And if, if an inmate destroys it, which I don't think he can, but if an inmate does, then the rest of the inmates will, will show their, their pleasure, their concerns. So we don't see that happening.
With this question for the sheriff, would that improve your daily operations at the jail?
Well, as y'all know, we work very shorthanded over there. With this, we don't have to move an inmate on Saturday and Sunday. The way it's set up now, our visitation's through glass, on the phone. They sit and look at each other. They will put the video screens in the back, in the pods, where they're talking about, and also put them up where the citizens come in to do their visitation. We can allow them to visit during the week if we have this, because we don't have to move an inmate. Also, they can go online through a computer at home and have visitation, but that's where it costs them the money. Somebody's got to pay for that. The visitation at the jail is free. But it keeps us from tying up people all day Saturday and Sunday, moving a hundred and fifty inmates back and forth for their visitation. If they have this video, they, we can just allow the public to go in, they can get on the, the phone and the video stream and talk to them while they're back in the pod. And then the other, the icon it's talking about, they can do their key, they can order, eventually they connect it to key, they can do their ordering. The way we do it now is they write it down, Sherry has to go in and do all the ordering herself. If you put it back there, they're going to order more, they're going to create more revenue coming in through key. It also will tie into their bank accounts, which will automatically pay what they order.
How many of these units are we looking at?
You know, the exact number will be figured up on, on the site survey. Sheriff, correct me, you have eight male pods, two female pods, and a trustee pod? Does that sound right?
Uh, I think that's, that's pretty close. We have one more solitary pod, but they probably wouldn't allow it to be.
Okay. So, and a pod at their jail houses about sixteen inmates, okay? And so with eleven different pods, eight men, two women, and one trustee, that's eleven, we'd probably want to put at least a couple in the visitation area. So that could be thirteen. I, I think that would be probably the maximum. Video visitation costs the county and the jail nothing, zero. We pay all of the cost for installing the units. These units are about forty-five hundred dollars apiece. So you can see the investment that we're putting in upfront. But what we will be doing is encouraging the friends and family members to visit from home, paying per session. You know, they have to set up an account so that we know they have a legitimate way to pay. The sheriff has to approve, he'll see when he comes in in the morning, he or his jail staff will see who has scheduled visits. And he can say, no, this person's not visiting. He can cancel them. But, so in other words, he will approve the visits. And instead of just Saturday and Sunday, the inmates can visit, it's up to the sheriff when they can visit, but he could have them visiting from eight to ten every day. And just think of, you know, this is money, this is revenue. The inmates plus are going to be happier because they're visiting with friends and family. There'll be less aggression, less tension. All of that will be helpful when it comes to, to, you know, I hate to say it, but election time, you're going to have happier, you know, friends and family members, you're going to have happier inmates. Also, keep in mind that the jail does, you don't allow small children, right?
Under twelve.
Under twelve. So an inmate who has a six-year-old son and an eight-year-old daughter can't visit them. Well, from home, they could. Maybe they have an eighty-year-old father that's an invalid and cannot get to the jail, he can visit. Maybe they have a cousin in California who is just not going to be able to get to Scottsboro, they can visit. So this is, this is an incredible item. Now, we're not the only ones that, that have this item, but I think we have the best one. We have two LED lights on either side. You know, sometimes in these pods, it's dark. You get a cloudy day or at nighttime, something, it's dark. We have these very nice lights. If you're going to pay for a visit, you want to see who you're visiting with, okay? You're going to say, what if someone at home isn't acting correctly? Well, these visits are monitored and they can be cut off immediately, okay? Immediately. And plus, if they do something that's inappropriate, then you do not ever have to let them visit again. You can shut off their visiting privileges. All, all video visits are monitored and recorded, okay? So they're, they're recorded. How long do we keep them? That's up to y'all. How long do y'all want us to keep them? But that can be an invaluable tool for you in investigative situations. Anyway, I've taken up my time. I, you know, obviously I could talk about Securus all day.
Any other questions from the commission? What's required? You say that, is there any additional cost to move forward with the video visitation system from what we've, we've basically paid this break this year and the sheriff department paid this previous year?
Well, in, in an effort to be totally upfront and transparent, the jail is responsible of running-
Electrical.
-electrical to our units.
And if you already have electrical coming in the pods, which most likely you do, there shouldn't be a whole lot of other costs to that.
So other than the power?
That we run all day.
We pay nothing additional to you in the contract.
No, you do not. No, sir.
We're about to pay back.
All right.
You're talking about a revenue stream, I mean, I mean, are you going to give us a bid? And is it comparable to other companies if we check around and see what kind of payback revenue stream we're going to get from another company for the same product?
Well, you would have to think that in such a competitive industry as inmate telephones, things don't usually get too far away from each other. We're normally all very competitive. We're going to put, you know, forty, fifty thousand dollars of equipment in your jail upfront, us. Normally the way it works, and I'm trying to be as transparent as I can be, normally the way it works is that the jail, the county does not receive commission until we've paid for that amount. Not, not make a profit, just pay what it costs us, okay? That could take two years, it could take three years. And then from that point on, then we share the, the revenue. A twenty-minute call from home is going to cost about twenty dollars. So we're going to share that twenty dollars. Securus will make part, you'll make part of every, now, and as a sheriff.
So in three years, it's a fifty-fifty split?
No, sir, it's-
Twenty percent. However, if you reach one and a half visits a day prior to that in a month's time, we would also share that twenty percent with you. So we, I just ask for a threshold of visits per month. So we, you can be shared as, as long as you reach that one and a half visits per inmate.
So in other words, if you have a hundred inmates, and in a month's period, you have a hundred and fifty video visits from home, that's one point five, then you'll make commission that month.
Yeah.
That, and even though maybe we've agreed that you won't make commission for two years or three years, it starts that day, you see? Because you've reached that one point five. And we're going to help you reach that one point five because I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you a stack of brochures, you know, similar to this, that you will gift to every friend and family member and gift to every inmate. And I'm going to give you bigger versions, posters to put up on your walls in your booking area, in your visitation area, in your lobby. We're going to make sure that people know that they can visit from home, they don't have to pay for a babysitter, they don't have to pay for gas, they don't have to pay for food, they don't have to take off time from work. You might say, twenty dollars? That's a lot of money. No, not when you consider gas, food, babysitter, take off from work, other things that you're going to be spending. So, you know, I have jails, I have jails that don't allow any, in, in jail visits anymore. I mean, that's really being phased out. There will come a time when if you visit an inmate, you will visit from home. Every laptop that's sold these days have a camera in it, you know? Like mine, mine isn't the latest, I have to put a little camera on top of it, but the newer ones have cameras in it.
Other questions?
Do you have a copy of the contract that you're going to leave with us?
I do, yes, sir.
If, if we move forward with this video portion, as I understood it, we would have to do something to, to stop the current contract? Is that correct? Or how do we need to do, if we choose to move forward with this, what action do we need to take?
Well, if you would allow Securus to continue as your video, as your inmate telephone provider, I have a letter here that you would sign and fax or send to me. And you can think about it for a few days. You really have until March eighth to make a decision. I can do video visitation whether I have your inmate telephone contract or not, so-
That's a separate-
It's a separate agreement.
It's separate.
That would be on a three-year contractual arrangement separate from that.
So as, as long as we choose to stay with Securus, there's nothing we need to do other than, well, is there anything we need to do if we decide to stay with Securus just on the phone, on the regular contract? I'm trying to understand what we and the commission would.
Yes, yes. I'm, your contract, and I'll leave you the two copies I brought for y'all, says that ninety days before the end date, you would need to let us know in writing that you're terminating the contract. Ninety days, the, the end date's June eighth, so ninety days would be March the eighth. If you do nothing and we've heard, we've heard nothing from you, then it automatically renews. If you don't want it to automatically renew, then you need to inform us in writing. Besides doing nothing, you could also sign the letter that I have here, that would also renew it. And then a year from now, we can, we can talk about it again. It's, the original contract was for three years, these renewals are for one year. There's three of them, that's part of the contract that the sheriff signed. Video visitation is, can be separate. You know, one day, the, the next time that Securus is allowed to, to do a brand-new contract, then we would include video visitation. We'd put it all together. But, you know, God forbid y'all go with some other inmate telephone provider, I could still be your video visitation provider. So we can still do that. And, you know, y'all can discuss it and then let me know what y'all want to do. You know, I'll be happy if y'all want me to come in at another date and set this up and demonstrate it for you. I mean, I'd do it now, but I know there's other people waiting. But, but it's a remarkable unit, and if y'all want to see it in action, let me know.
So we can continue our current phone contract, and then when we're ready, add this video visitation at any point?
Yes.
And would we want, we would want to keep both, correct? So, so unless there's-
The policy that's in there is going to stay that this is just addition to-
Okay. So for the time being, unless there's a need to change, we can keep the Securus contract
we have now and at any point? Okay, that's what I was trying to do.
Yes, that is correct.
Yes.
I thought, I didn't know if it had to be the same.
No, we can create an addendum that would have the video visitation in the separate contract. It would be in addition to your phone system.
And because it's no cost to the county, it does not have to be bid, is that correct?
Yes, there is no, no call.
Next item on the agenda is concession stand at the department park. Mr. Moore?
My, uh, four, it's a contract, draw it in. Everybody's got a copy of it. What is, the lady just wants to do it seasonal, probably eight months out of the year, and the contract states all that's renewable after, she has to renew it every year. It's got the cost and everything in the contract. I just can't remember basically what it is.
You said, should, it would be a seasonal thing?
Yeah, it's probably about eight months out of the year. I think, you know, it's for a year contract, but she keeps it over, open the whole year and that's fine, but I think she still has to pay the hundred, you know, the amount every month.
Okay, regardless?
Regardless of what she's opening, of what she's-
Okay.
But I think once she finds out, I think once she gets out, she's going to find it's just going to be a seasonal thing. Probably no more than eight months out of the year. November, December, January, February, I think, for so much. I think she'll find out that, you know, she's not going to do, she could open that those times, but she will still have to pay you back. Anything she approves, let me-
Is, now, how will she be setting this up? Will it be a small thing, I guess, a building?
She's getting a pre-fab building, something like a sixteen by twenty, and it's going to go where the office used to be. Apparently it's got a septic hookup, it's got water recovery, it's got a metro hookup. Now, all that would have to be, she would have to come in there and get it all wired and have it inspected and all that. So it would have to be inspected before she could even open to get her business license and help the department to, to approve it, to get it opened up.
Questions or comments on this? Is she, how soon are we wanting, or she wanting to get this started?
Top two today, and I told her I'd like to get it by at least, no later than the middle of May, April, no later than the first of May. You know, it's going to take her a while to get down and get it set up, get it inspected, get it watered. So, you know, everything's set up. But once she gets it set up and it goes good, then, you know, it's got a renewable contract. They would want to renew her contract, and you know, that would just be substantial.
Is she aware of all the regulations for the health department in order to do this?
She's in top of the business licensing instructor of, I think, the county, and she's talked with, she's talked with all the appropriate tables.
Do you think we ought to add that to the contract with the-
That's accurate.
That the tenant is responsible for all health department regulations? We're not going to-
I advise that.
It doesn't provide that?
I advise that, though. She would refer, actually, all laws, because there are a lot of laws that she has to. We conferred with the DECA, because you may or may not remember. We have some issues with the DECA because of the grant that the county got in nineteen seventy-five. And so this, this agreement that you have in front of you has been submitted to a DECA and they've approved, has all their regulations and requirements in it. Which basically includes that the tenant has to comply with all laws of every county. which basically includes that the tenant has to comply with all laws of every county, state, federal, local, city, that, whatever, everything.
And I see her copy of this just to look at. She said it all, she said it looked good. She didn't have a lot of questions about it. She said it looked good to her.
Is this true?
That's provided.
Any questions?
And then, just to set your mind at ease a little bit, the county has a right to approve what she's going to put there before she puts it. So she would have put up something that the county would not approve of, or get to approve what it's like.
Well, I mean, if she gets all her inspections and everything is, you know, nicely, it's orderly. She's got to have it wrapped and worked for a good amount of time.
Can you put together this contract correctly?
I did. Yes, I did.
Other questions? Are we, are we ready to move forward with this tonight? Or do we want to put this at the meeting in March? Do you think, do we need to try to do this tonight so that she has the time? Or will that first meeting in March be accurate time?
I think, I mean, if y'all are good with it, you know, we can do it tonight. Probably give her time to start working on it so we could get it open. You know, this is first of March, pretty much right now. And by the time she gets her building set and all her inspections and stuff, then you probably, it's probably going to push her to get it open by middle of April or first of May.
First of May.
No objection, then we'll place it on the agenda immediately following as well? Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. Okay, next item is a contract for our emergency operation procedure. Everyone can proceed to email with this information. And I'll let Mr. Ashburn, if you would, tell us.
The emergency operation plan is one of the requirements that FEMA has that the county participates in. It's one of three items that we have that, where we get money back to fund our office. And this emergency operation plan is something that every county in the state has to have. And it's a, every five years, you have to update. That's what this is, is this update, this is the review.
Questions or comments on this? And if the, I will say, it's ten thousand dollars, is that correct? That is in the budget, the inmate's budget to cover for this year, so. Any questions or comments on this item? If there's no objection, then we'll place this on the agenda immediately following as well? Okay, temporary safety policy. You have in your packets a copy of safety policy. I think there are probably several other things in here. We as a commission do need to approve a safety policy for, for the county based on the requirements that the district board, and if you want to kind of tie it up.
Yes, he took out this letter in the packet.
Yes.
Okay, this pretty much spells it out. We have had a, a safety coordinator and a committee since May two thousand and ten. And all these people here is on the safety committee, plus some others. And our administrator is also on, the chairman is on, but we have to participate in, in having a safety committee and coordinated by a medical insurance. They require you to do your liability and, and for your workman's comp. But to give this, to give the rebate, you've got nine things that you have to do. And it's pretty simple. Everything that the committee and the coordinator is supposed to do has been done. The part that the member wants is, this may be a policy. And the one thing six here on your letter shows the things that they actually want to have as policy. Now, I have some examples of some of it in there if you want to change it. Where we do have some problems is number five, the new employee orientation policy. We don't have anything like that. This is something that we've got. And the other thing is number six, where employee motor vehicle policy will come into play. This is where everybody that drives a county vehicle, driver's license would have to be checked in. And Chuck probably could help in this, which is a little problem. What do we need to do in that?
I don't know. They tell me I cannot do it for this purpose, for that purpose.
Is there somebody that can pay to do that?
I don't know. Maybe I'm good through one hundred something.
There is a service, I think Councilon Aging, our team uses it right now for their best strategy for the services and how you do this.
Right.
I hope you have the paper in the leg, but I think that would be-
We can take a look at that part.
And the, as you say, we, by having this safety committee and coordinator, this year we saved a rebate of thirteen thousand seven hundred thirty-three dollars. We got to do this anyway. Why not go with it and adopt these policies, get money for it? And basically, everything's done except they're going to set copies of this stuff, adopt it as policy. That's pretty much it.
Is the safety committee information here also?
The safety committee, what I, I found about that, like I said before, we've got a safety committee in place now. They don't require that that to be set in stone and adopted by the commission. You may, whoever, you can add as many people as need to be. Just let them know who is being added or taken away from the committee.
Okay. So we've got the several policies, and I think you've got maybe two copies of it in there. These several policies. We can approve what we have presented to us tonight. Would we, would, we have the time to review these, make some slight changes for next month?
Yes, we're going to have another safety committee scheduled first of April. And we have represented Mr. Terriag, it was a medical, who wants to come up between now and then he might even be at that, maybe at that time. So we've probably got the month of March to actually do it. We were, we were supposed to have had it before this, but since we've done everything that they had asked on the committee, they want to have, give us a rebate for this year. But next year, we got to have these requirements done as policy.
So I'd like to ask, I guess we'll get the committee of emergency management to take a look at this. And of course, everyone has a copy of this. If we will review that, I believe Mr. Guffey is the chair of that committee, which I can be sure. And if you have any concerns on what's there, if you can get that to Mr. Guffey and, and Mr. Ashburn. If we could get something, maybe by the end of March, on what was said on these presented information. Any questions or comments on these?
Sure, you're not going to go with the example?
Correct.
Thank you.
Other further questions or comments? And the next item regarding the safety committee appointment, as you said, that, that does have to be something adopted by the-
Right, right. Just like the coordinator or you as the chairman could appoint anybody to the safety committee. I just have to let them know who is acting on the committee.
Okay. Any, any further questions or comments on that? Okay. Next item is regional degree removal. This has been brought to a prior work session, and I asked that we put this information you have in your packets tonight. This is a copy of the, how the process works. There are some questions on how this process work. It also includes information on the bid process that the state, or I guess the ACCA went through in order to go through this process. Mr. Wyder, or Sanders, do we have a copy of the current, of a contract for this? Of what the contract looks like? Okay. I'll get a copy of that email to everybody, but I wanted you to have this. Again, if the commission approves to do this, I'd like to go forward, ask the different municipalities if they'd like to sign on and then have the commission do that. So if you would review that information if you have any other questions. And anything at this time on that?
I had a mission this last time. We have a local and also municipal that's signed, and we just got our local there as the regional. Then the ACCA wanted to go, I know, so we kind of, we can go both ways. Our, our county may have a little, our local is a little flayer spend, we expect it.
Could we tie that with the cities and do some type of mutual agreement, cities on that? Or would we have to go through the state? Or could you review that, Mr. Ford?
I can review it. Talking about using our bid in conjunction with the cities. I'll have to go back and see what our, our department said.
I'm not so sure. Should, I should have looked. I actually didn't see this on here. I believe we set all of our bids up as a joint bid with the cities, if that you anticipate. And I cannot recall, this was the first year we gave this. I cannot recall if we set it up as a joint bid or not, but I can get that bid form.
Jeff, that may negate even having to do this, then?
Except this will maybe be a longer contract. Do you know how long this one is?
This is a year, I believe. And when did we bid that, Mr. Wyder?
That would have been, let's see, this is, I don't know.
Was it for a year? Or do you remember the time period that we did it out? Was it for more than one year, or was it for-
It was, it was bid out, that we would do it for one, one year. Right now, we're probably a call for it to review to renew for the second year in October. We'll have that option in the third year. Of course, you've got to mutually agree with us and that.
Any other questions, comments, Mr. Ford? Next item is budgeting.
This is in your packet last time. This is something that we've all been working on for the departments that are included. I did send you via email one or two adjustments to this budget, so you should, you should have the final in there. But this is something that you, you have all been working with the department heads, and this is just the changes that you asked me to make. So if you approve this tonight, I'll actually make them in the system.
I'll go ahead and go over the basic things that we've, we've done here. Under the, you have four budgets, I believe. And under the commission budget, we brought IT as well as the licensed inspector budgets. Combine that with the commission budget. So there are no longer those other two budgets, and IT was reduced by quite a bit. So there were some savings there in the licensed inspectors' holes, and we've got those savings there. On the courthouse maintenance budget, courthouse maintenance was in several different funds. We brought all of those funds under this one account. And there were substantial savings, I think it's several hundred thousand dollars we saw in savings from the courthouse maintenance budget when we brought these from the 112 and from the different funds that they were in. So we've also taken out one of the positions under the salaries and wages. And where there is, I think that was the other big part of savings in that area. Mapping and appraisal and the revenue officer, the next two that you have. There weren't many changes that could be made there. However, the revenue office did provide us with some things that we were committed to this year. Some savings there. I can't remember what the total amount, you know, the total amount. They did offer a position to hold off a hiring position, so that would have some savings as well as some of the projects that they had, which came to about ten thousand dollars, you know, that project. So there's maybe thirty, forty thousand dollars in savings in those budgets. Some for personnel, some for the projects that they-